All right, I'll call this meeting to order. Uh, this is the March of 2020 meeting of the Richland Bean Blossom Community School Corporation School Board. We are doing things a little differently tonight. We have to abide by the restrictions on the number of people that can be in a room. There are only five individuals in the room. And I as the board president is in the room. Dr. Jerry Sanders, our wonderful folks from CATS, appreciate you coming out. Mr. Wicker is here in the audience and Mr. Rauten, our IT director, all present in person. So I'll do a roll call for the board. Mr. Dernall?
I'm here.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Hi, thanks.
Mrs. Mary?
Here.
And Mr. Tucker? Mr. Tucker? Brad, are you still there?
Uh, yes, pres- present.
Okay. Um, we will have the pledge, so please say it for the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America.
Of the United States of America.
Which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Justice for all.
Thank you. Please be seated. Um, I would like, because we have some trying times here, to have a brief moment of silence. So we'll do that. Okay, our next item would be visitor comments. Do you have a comment?
I do.
Okay.
How would you like us?
Uh, probably be best if you moved up to this chair.
Sure.
So that CATS could pick you up.
Sure.
And state your name and...
You got it. We know the drill by now.
Okay.
Uh, hello, my name's Colby Wicker. Uh, if anybody watching doesn't know me, I'm pretty sure everybody who's on the call knows me. I'm a senior here at the high school. Um, the first thing I really wanted to do was say how much I appreciate the board and Mr. Kerr's decision to still allow the visitors' comment. I think it's very important and I, I, I appreciate you doing that. Um, I'd like to applaud the actions of Dr. Sanders, of which I'm sure was fully supported by the board. We've made drastic moves over the, over the past few days to ensure the safety of our students and I couldn't be more proud to be a member of our community. Uh, this outbreak has forced our hand to pay almost sole attention to slowing the spread of COVID-19 and that truly is a laudable goal. Uh, but as I'm sure the board and Dr. Sanders know, the world doesn't come to a stop just because we're trying to fight this. We're still paying light bills, supporting teachers in their efforts to educate students, although in a very different way and plenty, plenty more. Uh, the pandemic is an oxygen sucker, but we must not let this urgent and the urgent and important issues drown out the important things that aren't as urgent. Um, and as we continue to fight back against this terrible virus, I urge the board to continue considering the proposition of ending random student drug testing. Um, we can do better and we must do better for our students. In the coming weeks, I'll meet with Mr. Norris to discuss the merits of abandoning random drug testing because of the mental health professionals that we have in the building every day to help curb those stemming issues of drug use. Um, we cannot allow this terrible battle that we're all fighting as, as, as a school community, as, or even as a nation, ebb the flow of progress. Uh, and I, I really do appreciate you guys letting me speak again, so thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Colby.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, we'll move on to our next item, which is a consent agenda, uh, where we're trying to put a number of our regular routine items together for one vote. Uh, this would include the approval of the minutes for February 17th of 2020, the treasuries report for February of 2020, for claims, which are gross wages on 21420 and 22820, for a total of $1,266,765.25. Uh, claim prepays from February 1st to February 29th, claims, regular vouchers for March 23rd, claims for Forest Hill vouchers of March 24th, and those vouchers totaling $1,452,046.23 for a total of vouchers and payroll of $2,718,811.48. We're also considering donations. We have several. Uh, we have $375 from Bill and Donna Atkinson for Supply Center, uh, $1,200 from Local Union Number 725, IBEW, for the Junior High Robotics and Robotics and Computer Science Lab. We also have $3,345.60 from Smithville Telecom for the Junior High Collaboration Stations. Uh, also $914.84 from Donors Choose for a changing table for Mrs. PA's class, $421.1 from Donors Choose for KidCraft Interactive Toys for Mrs. Robbins' class, um, and also supplies for raising chickens from the Ellisville Tractor Supply Company, which was a project that the Junior High was going to be working on. So those are our list of donations. Uh, personnel, we have resignations, retirements, non-renewals, leaves and terminations 1 through 5, and personnel appointments and transfers, uh, 1 through 13. Uh, Dr. Sanders, would you like to comment on any of those?
I, yes. Uh, first of all, I want to go back to the donations and, um, we have quite a long list today and that is exciting. We always want to recognize, uh, the many folks who support, uh, our students and staff at RBB. Uh, and, and just to note, uh, on the, uh, science project, we have an animal science class at the Junior High and one of their projects is their raising chickens and they went to the, uh, Ellisville Tractor Supply Company to buy those supplies and they just donated them on the spot. So just want to thank, uh, the Ellisville Tractor Supply Company for that. And then as far as personnel, I just want to recognize Jenny McGuire, who has been our payroll clerk, and, uh, she has, uh, worked tirelessly for several years here at RBB and making sure that, uh, we all get paid. And, uh, I just really appreciate her dedication and, and wish her luck as she moves on to a, a new position. Uh, Jenny is still going to work with us as a consultant as we transition to, uh, the new payroll clerk, who the board will be voting on tonight, John Kiefer, and, and working to make that transition, provide the necessary training.
Okay. Thank you very much. And for motions, what I ask, uh, since this is, uh, remote, I would ask that the board member state their name and make the motion. Um, second. Do we have a motion on the consent agenda?
Yeah.
Jimmy Dernall, second.
Okay. Uh, moved and seconded. Any, uh, questions or comments from the board? Hearing none, we'll do this in roll call, uh, to make sure that public knows who's, who's voting. So, Mr. Dernall, yea or nay?
Aye.
All right. Uh, Mrs. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And Dana Kerr, yes as well. So the consent agenda passes with a vote of 5-0. Our next item on the agenda is the business manager's report, so I'll turn that over to Matt Irwin.
Hopefully everybody can hear me all right. Um, I know Dr. Sanders had passed along, uh, the normal papers that, uh, we give to you each month. Uh, we won't go into great detail on that, but if you guys end up having questions or, uh, want to talk about that some more, feel free to reach out to me anytime. Here, Paul, um, we'll, we'll, uh, get back to you real quick. Uh, but everything, uh, is continuing to trend in the direction that we wanted to go and obviously, um, we'll look to, uh, navigate the circumstances that everything is, is going on here in these, these times with the coronavirus and, and hopefully continue to navigate them well.
Thank you very much, Matt. Um, our next item is the discussion of the 2020 bond projects. I'll turn it over to Dr. Sanders.
Okay, so, uh, on the line tonight, we have, uh, Jacob McClellan with, uh, Boys McKinney and Evans, Matt Shoemaker with Stiefel, and also George Link, uh, our architect with VPS. And, uh, they're going to go through and, uh, each talk about the bonds and their, their perspective and, and share the information that they have individually. So let's start with Jacob.
Sure. Yeah, this is Jacob with Boys McKinney and Evans. Um, tonight, I think you guys received a copy of the timetable for the issuance of the bonds. Tonight, we just kind of wanted to go through and, um, give you an update and let you know kind of what was coming down, uh, the road with respect to a bond issue for this year. Um, and, uh, kind of the next steps. So I'll, I'll go through the authorization steps and then I'll turn it over to Matt, uh, with Stiefel. So, um, this will be a lease financing, um, with the building corporation, uh, very similar to the last few, um, bonds the school has issued, uh, where the building corporation will issue the bonds to make the improvements and the school will pay lease rentals, um, to the building corporation, which are assigned to make the payments on the bonds. Um, process wise, um, we, we've kind of started the process, we had a notice in the paper, um, last Wednesday, um, because we're, um, amending, you know, your current financing lease, um, the statute requires a 30-day notice and with the way your, um, your meetings fall, um, we, you know, that gets us, uh, notice, um, so that we can have the hearings at the April 20th, um, meeting of the board. And so at the April meeting, we'll have, um, 1028 hearings on the two different projects and lease hearings on the two different projects and, um, approve the, or have you guys considered the approval of an execution, um, of an amendment to the lease, which would allow for the bond financing. Um, after the April 20th meeting, assuming that the, uh, lease amendment, uh, is approved and executed, um, we'll publish a notice of execution of the lease, which starts a 30-day remonstrance period. Um, during that, uh, period, during the time that we're waiting for that period to run, um, the, a rating will be applied for, for the bonds and an offering document, uh, will be completed. Um, we anticipate that being completed by mid-May, um, and then we'll be back, um, at the May meeting of the, uh, uh, your May meeting and, um, have the building corporation meet, um, probably right before or right after if we can, and that'll be the, for the final kind of approval of the bonds. Um, right after that meeting, um, we'll have the POS, the offering document for the bonds released, um, and, uh, it'll be right around that time that the 30-day objection period runs. There's a 30-day objection period after you guys execute the lease amendment following the April meeting. Um, and then we anticipate sale of the bonds, uh, around June 9th with closing around, uh, June 23rd. Um, and, and this is all subject to, you know, working with, um, Stiefel and Jerry and, and Dana and keeping you guys all, uh, kind of informed on, on the market and, and what's going on in the market. So I, I don't have much to add and I could take in questions now, or otherwise I can turn it over to Matt with Stiefel to talk through his presentation.
Does anybody have any questions for Jacob?
I, I do have a question, um, and Jerry probably can answer. Can they find this information on the website?
Yes.
Well, okay.
As far as the calendar goes?
Yeah, just any information that the public wants to find out that we're talking about. It's one thing to hear something said and then it's another thing to actually be able to read it.
Sure. No, we will, we will put all this on the website.
Okay.
Yeah, and to, to the extent it's helpful, the, the notices kind of went through this a little bit, but, uh, they should have been in the Ellisville paper and the Bloomington Herald Times on last Wednesday.
Okay.
Also, I'd like to mention, before I forget, that next month, we're not sure how that meeting will go. Uh, we're hoping everything will be back to normal and we'll, uh, be able to have a normal board meeting. Uh, if not, we are going to find a way, uh, IT director's working on it, to have a, a virtual board meeting where there can, uh, be sharing of, uh, the information that we're, we have, but also, uh, to allow visitor comments. Um, and what we would encourage, those who have visitor comments or who have, um, anything that they'd like to say on the leases or the 1028 hearing, if possible, to submit those early, um, in, in writing to, uh, by, by email, and we can make sure that, uh, the public has access to, to those as well, um, so that, uh, ju- just as another opportunity for the public to be heard. So we will, we will be, uh, putting it out there that, that people can, uh, respond ahead of time, uh, with their email comments and questions. Anything further for Jacob?
No, I mean, I can turn it over to Matt then.
Okay. Matt, your turn.
Well, thank you, everyone, and hopefully you can hear me okay. Um, my name is Matt Shoemaker. Uh, I work for Stiefel. We're serving as underwriter on this financing. Uh, essentially what that means is we're going to help structure, uh, the repayment of the bonds that fit within your desired tax rate goals, and then we're ultimately going to help you sell those bonds, uh, either through a public market financing or directly to a bank, uh, through a private placement. And with the tax rate bouncing around the last several years, our, our main goal with this project really is to smooth out the overall tax rate while still leaving some rooms for, for future projects. In our discussions with Dr. Sanders and, and Dana and Matt, we know that there are things, uh, on the horizon, there are more projects in future years, so we want to be mindful of that when we come up with a, a repayment option to, to fit within your tax rate goals, but again, still leave some room, uh, in the future so that you can do future projects without impacting your tax rate. Uh, and so my colleague Chad Blacklock, who could not be on the call tonight, has put together, um, a pretty sophisticated budget model, uh, with great help from both Matt and Paul, and the idea behind that is to make sure that the repayment that we come up with on the bonds, again, is going to result in that desired tax rate. And I know that is important, uh, for Richland Bean Blossom right now and that when you issue these bonds, uh, the future tax rate be what you expected it to be. So I'll quickly go through my presentation. I think it's only three or four slides, uh, and then obviously happy to answer any questions on either that, uh, or what's going on with the market these days. Any questions, uh, before I get started? Okay, great. So, uh, on page two of the presentation, uh, that Dr. Sanders sent around to you today, uh, this shows your outstanding debt payment, uh, in the bar graph, along with the corresponding tax rate. And again, I know this has moved around a little bit in the last few years, um, and you can see in 2019 and 2020, those payments go up a little bit, and then the payments drop back down in 2021. However, you can see your tax rate actually is projected to jump up in 2021, and that's really a result of what started back in 2018, all kind of ironing itself out. So we're very confident moving forward with this bond issue, um, once it's issued and starting to be repaid, and that that tax rate is going to completely smooth out, uh, and be more predictable moving forward. But we always like to start with just an outstanding debt chart. If you did nothing at all, again, this is what your debt payment and corresponding tax rate would look like. Page three, uh, we bring on a proposed repayment schedule, uh, for the $7 million 2020 bond. Uh, so in the blue bar graph, you can see that's all of your outstanding debt, uh, and then the green bar graph on top of that would be, uh, the resulting payment once these bonds are issued. And of course, the, the payments are not locked in yet, so these are what we are projecting, um, but they are subject to final market conditions at the time. In the red, uh, again, this tracks, uh, both your historical tax rate, uh, and the future projected tax rate, and so you can see what the tax rate's done in, in 18, 19, and 20, and what it's proposed to do, uh, moving forward. And we do believe that even by adding a payment in 2021, uh, and you'll see this on the last page, um, through the budget mechanism, um, through line 11, we can actually tweak the budget slightly to have that payment come on in 2021 and not increase, um, the tax rate past what we had projected to be on the previous page, if that makes sense. So this shows, uh, and tracks where that, that debt service tax rate would be, uh, moving forward after the $7 million bonds are issued. This last chart that we have on page four, this looks at your overall tax rate. So after your pension bonds, uh, paid off this past year, we're now just looking at your debt service and your operations fund as tax-supported, um, um, rate and fund. So we are looking at, uh, and have been directed, um, by the administration to look at an overall tax rate of a dollar 12. Uh, and so the, the structure and the repayment of these bonds, uh, fits within that goal. You can see in 2021 and 2022, looking at your overall tax rate, again, debt service plus operations, will stay within that dollar 12 and then drop in 2023. And that would allow you, uh, if you would like, in 2022, to come back with, um, some size of project, issue it in 2022, um, for a tax rate levied in 2023, again, to fit that payment in there without impacting the overall tax rate goal of a dollar 12. Uh, there's another slight step down in 2028, uh, and then another one in 2032 as well. And again, this is, uh, projected debt service tax rate moving forward after the $7 million bonds are issued. Last page, uh, I have, and then I'll answer any questions, uh, just list the legal parameters of the proposed bond issue, and this will be in the resolution as well, but we do like to summarize it just on one page so you can see all the numbers. So, uh, max par amount of the bond, $7 million, uh, estimated cost of issuance of $285,000 would give you net funds of $6,715,000. Uh, we estimate, uh, a lease payment, um, that's just the payment on the bond, of $580,000. You will note in the resolution, uh, that you are approving, um, if you move forward, a maximum lease payment of 1.1 million. We don't ever expect it to get to that number. We do like to provide significant cushion in there, given that you are, um, passing documents now for bonds that won't be issued for a few months. A lot of things can happen, uh, and really that's just a flexibility. Just because you're approving a max lease payment of 1.1 million, doesn't mean that's what it needs to be. And you can see in the line before that, we're really projecting it to be $580,000 per year. So, um, that's purely a flexibility play to give you room that if for some, if for some reason something changed, uh, you could have a higher payment if you wanted to. Estimated interest expense of about 3.4 million, the estimated maximum tax rate impact, uh, of 12 cents. Um, I will note, again, this is based on the maximum lease payment divided, divided by what your current assessed value is. So while it shows 12 cents, we do not expect it to get anywhere close to that because we don't expect the repayment of 1.1 million, as I just explained. Um, but per statute and per resolution, we do have to list, uh, that maximum tax rate, and again, it is just a formulaic expression, um, it is not a net impact in any way. That last line, uh, what I showed from the first page of what we project your tax rate to do if you do nothing next year, um, is showing what the difference between if you did nothing versus if you did a bond issue. And again, I talked a little bit about the budget mechanism of being able to tweak things and fit that in there. We would expect your tax rate to be almost identical, um, .004 is a fraction of a penny, um, difference between what your rate would be. So, um, really good, um, ability to fit in this bond issue without impacting what your tax rate, uh, would have been. Um, in terms of the market, I'll just speak to it for a minute. I'm sure everyone has paid attention, uh, to stock markets. The bond markets have been equally, equally as impacted. Um, the public market, um, selling to, you know, normal investors, institutional banks, it's essentially shut down over the past week. Uh, we have done a few deals in the past week. I do think that things will be, well, hopefully somewhat back to normal by the time that you're looking at doing something, um, late May. I will say that the banks are, uh, very interested in looking at private placements. Uh, I know a rating is contemplated on the timeline. I think that's something if we do end up selling it directly to a bank, you won't need to get. So even though it's on the timeline, that's not set in stone. Um, so really, as you know, in, in all facts of life, right now, things and information is coming out very quickly. Um, we'll pay attention to the market, uh, we'll keep Dr. Sanders and, and Matt updated with how things transpire over the course of the next couple of months, um, that things truly are, are changing dramatically day by day. So with that, uh, I will be quiet. I'm happy to answer any questions. Anything I said that, that didn't make complete sense, um, please ask me, and if not, I certainly appreciate everyone's time.
I would like to...
No questions for me.
I, I would like to take the opportunity to try to reiterate again, um, our tax rate and, and what we've been through the last few years. In 2018, our tax rate jumped because of an error in calculating the, uh, payments necessary on debt service. And so in 2018, we had that unexpected jump, um, that rightfully so, was not received very well. So, but in 2019, we were able to lower the tax rate as much as it had gone up that it shouldn't have in 2018. So to bring it, uh, to kind of give the opportunity to pay back to, or some, to some extent, the, uh, taxpayers for what had occurred in 2018. So 2019 was to try to compensate for that. 2020, uh, showed a, uh, not a, a, a very big jump as we would have expected to go back to what it was, and the reason for that is because of the amount of funds that you're able to keep in debt service and carry over based on the, the bonds. Older bonds, you can keep up to 50% of the tax payments, and with the newer bonds, it's only 15%. So that, uh, in order to not carry over too much, um, we actually collected a little bit less than 20. So the relief we've had in 2019 and 20, um, uh, 2019 covered 2018, 2020 is because of the changing in, in, in the law. Um, but in 2021, we're going back to where we would have been and should have been all along of, of 2017. So, uh, just wanted to reiterate that again. So what the taxpayers will see from their tax bills is a slight...
Hold on, Dana.
I'm sorry?
Hold on. Seriously. I'll get him right back on. Are the others still on?
Nobody, everybody got knocked off.
Knocked off.
Knocked off. All right, let's see if we can do this real quick. We haven't even been on an hour yet.
How many people can we get on a single cellphone?
Three.
Maybe if we can't get everybody back, what we should do is use several cellphones to try to get at least the board members and Emily Cox back on.
Okay.
And we can-
Do it a few at a time?
Yeah, well, we, as far as the others, we can't get them back on, we can't get them back on.
Okay, so we'll do.
I'd be happy to donate my cellphone to the Cubs.
Oh, thank you.
George said he can hear us.
He can hear us? How?
I don't know.
My phone is not.
Maybe he could hear us?
Hey, so I'm still on, we can hear everyone but you and Dana.
Oh, everybody else is still in the-
Oh, everybody else is still connected, but our connection has dropped.
Yeah.
Jimmy's trying to call in and says it, and-
Dana?
There you are.
Hello?
Are you there?
Yep, I'm here. Jimmy's here.
Deborah?
Angie?
George?
Dave Jacobson?
Robin?
Christine?
Larry, matter what?
Mr. Tucker?
Brad's communicating with us on text, so he's out there somewhere.
Emily?
Yes, I'm here.
Okay.
Thanks.
Don't want to be missing a- Matt Schumaker can't.
I'm sorry?
I don't think Matt Schumaker is. I'm gonna tell him to try calling in again.
Uh, this, Tucker's back, Tucker's back on.
Great. Think we have everybody but Matt Schumaker.
They're all part there, okay.
Hey, Dana, I have a question.
Dana, we were hearing you too. You were just about ready to finish your explanation of the tax increase.
Okay. So again, I'm just letting the public know again that next year, they will see an increase in the tax rate, but that is getting us back to where we were in 2017. So we've had a little bit of a roller coaster ride, but when the board made the commitment to keep the debt service tax rate level, that next, in 2021, will be that level point of where we were at before the error occurred and then before the changes in the law and all that. So I just, you know, want the public to remember, the taxpayers to remember, they will see an increase next year. And then we're also going to shift from looking at just the debt service tax rate to looking at the overall tax rate, because that's really what impacts the taxpayer the most. So is there, is Mr. Schumaker back on yet?
We're trying.
We're trying.
Yes, Brad had a question, Dana.
Okay, go ahead, Brad.
Yeah, hey, this is Brad Tucker. Hey, on the, on the overall tax rate, on the two, the 21, 20, 21 and 22, I thought we were gonna try to get those down closer to a dollar and then level them off the rest of the way in. Is that not, is that not what we discussed?
You know, Brad, I can't, I can't answer that.
We probably need to get Matt back on the line.
I'm looking at page, at page four of the Stiefel diagram.
If we could, maybe we could go and have George and I talk about the projects, and we give Matt a little bit of time to get back on the line, and then we could-
That's fine.
Have him answer those questions.
Hey, you ready, Jerry? This is George.
Is that okay, Dana?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah, George, go ahead.
Okay. Within, within this bond issue, I believe you all have received that there's basically, the way we refer to it, two, two projects or two buckets for this project. One would be dealing with a new administration community building with renovations to the existing administrative building for maintenance and transportation, an additional storage building and parking for the buses, you know, expanding the bus yard there. And I believe you all should have received drawings, schematic drawings for those items. And then the second project will deal with the high school, looking at a pool renovation and an innovative learning center, which I believe is where Dr. Sanders spent quite a bit of time the last couple of weeks visiting prior to the issues that we're facing today with coronavirus, and then some smaller additional renovations that are high on the priority list at the high school. So, and the pool renovation, if you recall, has been on the list since 2017 when it created the list, so it's just been updated, and it's kind of the next one, and the next big project in line for that. If you remember, the original list in 17 had dealt with potentially moving the administration building, several different options, and this is the option that has evolved since then, kind of created a new look and a more welcoming space for the community to come in, use, and secure it offices there with the layout that we produced, and then additional space for maintenance and transportation.
Yes, these projects, we definitely work really hard to use these, the tax dollars that we receive, and that we want to be able to make sure that, that we're really trying to make sure that we're just taking care of the needs that we have in the school corporation. And, you know, our administration building is just not conducive to good business. It's very hard to be efficient, it's just not set up in a productive way. So we want to be able to have an administration building that, that the public will be able to come in, they will know exactly where to go when they come in. It'll be welcoming, it'll be organized. The school, the boardroom, and the community room will be something that will be used in very multiple ways. And each of the items on this list, like I said, meet a significant need, and I can go down through each one of them, the board so chooses. The other one I just want to highlight is the Innovative Learning Center. That is coming out of our Ready Schools Initiative, that we, we are really zeroing in on exactly how we want to move forward with Ready Schools. We want this to be something that is productive for our students. We want to be something that will prepare them for life after high school, that we will be able to invite some businesses in to do training. So there's just multiple ways that we could go with the Innovative Learning Center.
I have a quick question.
Okay.
Okay. What is the lab for?
What is what for?
In the fast area. Transportation.
Yes, so-
What is the, oh, oh, okay, that, this, this presentation that you looked at, that was an idea of whether the Innovative Learning Center could fit within the footprint of that, and that's something we're still exploring. We're currently looking at an option to add that, actually add that on to the high school and attach it to the high school, but that was just a moment in time where we discussed, could that happen over there?
Okay, so in other words, if you don't use it for a lab, there's a space for something else?
Well, for this, yes.
Okay.
Well, I certainly like the drawings and the schematics on it, I think it looks good.
Yeah, it looks good.
So, hey, I got a quick question, Jerry.
Yes.
Okay, on the, on the schematic that Deborah was referring to, is labs at, is all the, is all the part that's blue, is that brand new building there?
Yes.
Yes, the, the-
With the labs at, the classes, okay.
For, the, that's the addition for bus maintenance, to be able to pull buses in, work on them, get them in out of the weather, and actually work on them, and provide some additional workspace for facility maintenance.
But we're considering having classrooms in the, in the transportation building?
Well, no. One of the discussions we had early on, we're trying to figure out where would be the best place for the Innovative Learning Center. And so we, right now, you have to understand, these are just like proposals. So we're in a discussion stages of exactly where this learning center would be. And, and one of the ideas that, that was generated was, could we use part of the transportation, the existing, the current administration building, instead of turning it totally into, use it up for transportation and maintenance, using part of that for the Innovative Learning Center. The other idea is to make it an addition to the high school. And so, as we move forward, we'll have those discussions and zero in exactly what the project will look like. These are just preliminary drawings.
Okay, gotcha.
Working on the Ready Schools Initiative now is, we're not there yet exactly on what that Ready Schools Initiative is gonna need. So we're, we're preparing for it, but we don't know exactly yet what that's gonna look like.
Right. I echo what Jimmy said about the drawings of the administrative, I think that looks very nice and very receptive to the community. What about the auxiliary gym renovations? Is that still in infancy also?
Well, that is, that and the locker room and weight room, if you look at the, if you, and you're welcome, I could take you over there, you could look at the locker room and weight rooms and the auxiliary gym, they're just, they're just old, I think, well, older, the older I get, I don't, maybe I don't see that exactly, that phrase correctly, but it's, we're talking about in the 1960s, that the last time these areas were renovated, and so they just had-
I dressed in those dressing rooms, Jerry, Brad, that's how long I've been there.
Somewhere in the 60s, right, Jimmy?
65, yes, 65, 65. I hate to admit that, but yes.
All right.
Well, and also, both buckets have more things listed than we would likely be able to cover, just as, you know, we, it's been how we've been doing it, is, is if bids come in really good and we have extra funds and we can go deeper on the list, we will, we have that opportunity by adding things to the list, but we may not be able to hit them all. So we're hoping, but, you know, realistically, chances are, we won't be able to do everything.
Yes, I'm really interested in that last report that Jerry made there, I want, I want to see if we can get some of that updated there behind the gyms, that'd be great, so. I'm sorry, Jimmy Dernall.
Matt, are you on the line yet?
Matt Schumaker?
Yep, I'm here.
Is that Matt?
Matt, is that you?
Can you hear, yeah, can you hear me?
Yes, we can. Brad, do you want to ask your question again?
Yeah, Matt, and I don't, and I don't, Jerry, I don't think Matt was even there at that board meeting, but I thought that our goal was on the overall tax rate to level it off at a dollar and not go up to a dollar twelve in 21 and 22. So we're trying to make it level dollar all the way across.
Yeah, I don't think that we had heard that information. That's something we can look at, but I, I don't think that that's something that could be accomplished, given where the operations fund will go as well. I think it'd be difficult staying at a dollar without doing anything, but we'll look and see how much we can minimize that those first couple of years.
Dana, and I may have misunderstood that, Dana, at that board meeting, I think that was before Steve was on board.
Right, and I don't have any of that paperwork with me, so, but I, I'm pretty, we were at a dollar, and it was not, we weren't going to be able to keep it at a dollar, because it was, because the total in 18 with the tax error was a dollar twenty-five or six or seven, in that range. And then so, in 19, it was lower as a way to, because of the way things fell with bond payments, we were able to make it lower to help compensate the taxpayers for 18, and then 20 stayed low like 19 because of the change in the amount of money that you could carry over in debt service decreased by statute. So when we're talking about, I don't think we ever thought we could keep it at a dollar because of the projects we already have and what we're doing. So the fact that, so I don't, a dollar was where we were at when we had that meeting, not where we were gonna be leveling at. A dollar twelve was more consistent with where we were in 2017 before the tax error, and at the time, the board was saying to try to keep the tax level, or tax rate level. And originally, we were talking about the debt service tax rate, yet we changed that to starting to look at the overall tax rate because of, that's the actual total impact on the taxpayer. So I do not think that we were, we were at a dollar at that meeting, but that was because we were in that change, due to the change in the statute, and so we, yeah, I don't remember ever saying that we could, and I'm pretty sure we could not stay at a dollar.
Okay.
Jimmy Dernall here, that's where I remember Dana also, but had to go up just a little bit there, so.
So I can, Dana, this is Brad Tucker, can you get faith, I could tell, I could tell the constituents that in 2021, we're gonna be back to where we were approximately in 2017, does that sound correct?
Yes.
Yes.
That's correct, Brad.
Yes, it's definitely-
I just want to make sure that's accurate, yeah.
Yeah, and it's definitely correct on the debt service rate in particular, but yes, we are trying to match the tax rate even overall. Originally, we weren't talking about the overall tax rate, we were just talking about debt service. So I don't have in front of me what it was in 2017, but it's supposed to get us close to where we were before. to where we were before, before the tax rate.
As long as that's communicated to the, to the public, I feel okay with that, Dana.
Right, and that, that's the whole purpose I brought it up tonight, is I really want the public to remember, you know, that that's going to happen next year and not be caught off guard. I think every time we can mention that, we need to mention that, so that, so that they know.
Okay.
Any further questions?
Dana, you're, you're, sorry, your, your comments on, on what happened those past three years in the function, and where you got to the tax rate, or right on the money too, that's exactly why that occurred.
Well, thank you. It, it, this is a complicated process, and I've been trying to learn as much as I could, so thanks for letting me know that. Is there any further questions regarding the financial aspect of, of the projects?
Nothing is being decided tonight.
No, I'm good.
I'm good.
All right, any further?
Thank you.
And again, we're not voting, so any further discussion needed on the list of projects or the drawings that George had provided? Any further questions for George?
Not right now.
Okay, all right. So I believe that would complete then our discussion of the 2020 bond projects.
Yeah, thank you, Jacob, Matt, and George.
Thank you.
You're welcome, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you all for being there.
Bye-bye.
Okay, our next item on the agenda is consideration to approve the Neola Policies, Policies, Volume Thirty-One, Number Two, and Volume Thirty-Two, Number One. Dr. Sanders?
Yes, we presented these to the board at the February board meeting as a first reading. There were some questions that, that individually you shared with me, and those were answered and shared with the rest of the board. And the only change from the first reading is Policy Fifty-Six Ten, Suspension and Expulsion of Students. It did not have a box checked on page two, which basically states what we do in terms of students being allowed to make up tests and quizzes when they return from a suspension. So we've checked that, and, and we will, I sent that to the board for your review. So tonight, we're asking you for, for your approval of Neola Policies, the revisions to Neola Policies, Volume Thirty-One, Number Two, and Volume Thirty-Two, Number One.
Okay, do we have a motion?
Angie Jacobs.
Jimmy Dernall, last second.
Angie Jacobs, the first and the second, Jimmy Dernall. Any questions or comments on the Neola Policies? Hearing none, we'll do roll call, Mr. Dernall?
I.
Yeah, this, this is for approval. Mrs. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerr is, yes, the Neola Policies pass five zero. Our next item is a resolution authorizing administration to manage impacts of the coronavirus. Jerry, Dr. Sanders, would you please do that?
Yes, so I'm going, I'm going to speak in my superintendent's report, give everybody an update on RBB's response to the coronavirus. Obviously, it's something that, that none of us have ever experienced, it's uncharted territory, and we want to make sure that we are able to make decisions to be able to keep our students and faculty safe. The, the, it's a fluid situation, so it's always changing. And so I, the resolution gives me to, to have the discretionary and reasonable ability to take action. The resolution also enables us to pay our hourly employees that cannot come to work because of the coronavirus, and also, the resolution will empower the treasurer to pay all monthly claims without board approval. And so, and I just want everybody to know, as, as we are making these decisions, that we're, I'm letting the board know, so that they're on board and they know exactly what's going on. This resolution will expire at the end of the 2019-20 school year, so I recommend your approval.
All right, do we have a motion?
I move approval. I'll second.
Mary, first, and?
Sounds like Angie was second.
Angie seconded the motion. Any questions or comments? Yes, sir. Mr. Tucker?
This is us, Brad Tucker. I want to thank Dr. Sanders for the, the note he sent this afternoon about extended closure employee plan. I assume that has been sent to all the employees, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, and I, the, the, I think, just put on record, I appreciate that this is a, your transparency, this is a fluid situation, that this is with our continued funding from the state of Indiana, correct?
Yes, in fact, I, I put in the plan and tried to communicate to our hourly employees that because it's an ever-changing situation, we don't really know exactly what might come down the road in terms of the state and funding, school corporations. So I put a little note in the, the plan that I sent out to employees, that we can, we would have to make some adjustments to our desire to continue to pay hourly employees, make an adjustment if our funding from the state was to be cut.
Good, very nice job putting that together.
And just so, you know, everyone's aware, the resolution also says that the board can withdraw it at any time upon a board vote to do so. But I really appreciate Dr. Sanders, and he has been keeping the board extremely informed on everything on a very routine basis, and so I have no, no, no issues with, with this, and really, really appreciate all the hard work he, he is putting in on this. These are very challenging times, and he is, he's doing stellar for us, so I really appreciate him. Any further comments, question?
Dana, I have a question.
Mrs. Mary?
I don't know if this is the time, but what are we going to do about feeding the children? Does that funding keep coming, or how does that go on?
Yes, I'll, let me speak to that in my superintendent's report if I could, and then if you have any questions then.
Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Anything further? Hearing none, this would be for approval, voting for approval. Mr. Dernall?
Yes.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerr as well, pulls some favor up, so the resolution passes five zero. Our next resolution is to transfer funds from the operations fund to the rainy day fund, and we'll ask Matt Urban to discuss that with us.
Hey, can you guys hear me all right?
Yes.
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 Hey, so as you guys, I sent you guys the memo that was included in the board packet. So as you might remember, we did a similar resolution back in October of 2019. We ended up waiting to make that transfer as we took into consideration the cash flows for month to month with the raises, the retroactive, and the three pay months that was in January. I had spoken with state board of accounts, and, and at their directive as well, they said since we are having a new year in 2020, we have to reissue that resolution to be able to make that transfer, so that they would not take exception to it. So that's why we're here with this resolution again, is that we are, just to make sure that we're compliant with, with those, those regulations. Again, this is, this is a transfer that's allowable, because of the buildup of the cash balance from a little over 600K to just over 1.2 million this past year. And also, we still have that money that's in the bond, which is that also, that other cushion that we have. We're going to continue to monitor that impact of the current situation with the COVID-19, and the impact that that has on the school corporation and RBB, and so we'll determine the right time to make that transfer. But this resolution does allow us to make that transfer now in 2020, but we had to do a new one because of the new year.
Okay, do we have a motion?
So it's my recommendation that we approve that tonight.
I move approval.
Mrs. Mary?
I second it.
And Mr. Tucker, seconded, okay. Any questions or comments? Hearing none, by roll call, for approval, Mr. Dernall?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And Mr. Kerr pulls some affirmative as well, so the resolution passes five zero. Our next item on the agenda is permission to reserve future fuel prices, and we'll go back to matter with for that.
All right, so this next one was brought to our attention by our director of transportation, Audrey Myers, so very appreciative of this, that we talk about fuel prices and kind of where they're at currently. If we're in a position right now where we can reserve fuel prices for up to a year in advance, and, and when we do that, at the time, because of the prices, we can, we can secure considerable cost savings to our operations fund in, in regards to fuel, and just some numbers that she provided me with to just kind of put this in your brain a little bit. Last year, we were, we were averaging paying about $2.41 per gallon for regular gasoline. It was priced out just here today for a dollar fifty per gallon. This year, we've been paying about $2.25, but again, we got big with prices as of today with $1.50. And then once it turns to January, they raise that up a little bit, as prices usually increase or change to $1.80. And that's quite considerable changes in, in, to total dollars, when you talk about, usually on a yearly basis, we're consuming around 11,000 gallons of gasoline. The other one is the diesel fuel. We consumed last year around 28,000 gallons of diesel fuel at about $2.86 per gallon. This year, we've been paying around $2.63, and as of today, those prices were around $2.16. And then also for as that creeps to the new year, that January through September, right now, today, it was priced at $2.41. So we're talking about thousands and thousands of dollars of savings that we can secure if we lock in prices here in the near, very future, and we'll continue to monitor that when we think we have that best rate. Audrey, we'll go ahead and we'll secure those, those fuel prices to save ourselves some money. So it's my recommendation that we, we get that permission tonight.
Okay, thank you. Do we have a motion?
I move approval. I'll second.
Mrs. Mary moved approval, Mrs. Jacobs seconded. Any questions or comments?
I want to thank Audrey for thinking, thinking for us there, that's great. Jimmy Dernall?
Yes, I, I agree. Keeping an eye on that and thinking ahead shows how innovative our, our people are in trying to do the, what's best for our corporation, our community, and our kids, so appreciate them. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, this is a motion for approval with permission to reserve the fuel prices. Mr. Dernall?
Yes, sir.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Yes.
Mrs. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Uh, yes.
And Mr. Kerr also is a yes, so permission is granted with a five zero vote. Our next item on the agenda is the consideration to approve the amendment to the superintendent's contract. We did have a hearing on this previously, or a discussion, public meeting on that, and just to reiterate, the main changes in the contract would be an extension of the contract that would be beginning July 1st of 2021 and concluding on June 30th of 2022. It would be also paid an annual sum of $125,000 for the school year beginning July 1st of 2019 and ending Ju, June 30th of 2020, of course, subject to normal withholdings. And also, beginning July 1st, 2020, to, and ending June 30th of 2021, the salary of $130,000. So that is the contract, it's been on the school's website as well, for, for people to, to look at, and so I'll ask for a motion.
I move it. Give it to me. I'll second. I'll second.
Mr. Dernall was, and the second was Mrs. Mary. Any questions or comments?
I would like to say it is a, a great pleasure to, for the board to keep Mr. Sanders on as our superintendent, he's done a fantastic job.
You're here.
I, I agree as well.
Okay, if there's nothing further, we have a motion to approve the amendment to superintendent's contract. Mr. Dernall?
Yes.
Mrs. Jacobs?
Absolutely, yes.
Mrs. Mary?
Yes.
Mr. Tucker?
Yes.
And an enthusiastic yes from Mr. Kerr, so the contract amendment is approved at five oh vote. Okay, now we're to our superintendent's report. Dr. Sanders?
Okay, well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the board for the support and the, the vote that you just took. Really, every day that I am able to come to work, it's truly a blessing. I, I really appreciate the partnership I have with the school board. I have never worked with a board that cares so much about our students, our staff, and the fact that the entire community. So I, before I begin my report, I just wanted to say thank you, I appreciate that. Really, for my report tonight, I just wanted to give a report, an update on our Healthy Meals Plan, and also e-Learning Days. As I mentioned earlier, this is a, what we're dealing with, the coronavirus is an ever-changing situation, it's very fluid, and when we, we try to make a plan, and we share that and communicate that plan, but we, quite frankly, have to be thinking ahead, that, okay, we have a plan ready to go for the next two weeks, but what are we going to do for the weeks after that? And I'm glad that we're do that, we are doing that, because it, it's really, when these decisions are made, we, we don't really hear from the governor until everybody else in the state is hearing the same message, and, and so we try to anticipate that, and we're already talking about plans in the event that a decision is made or something changes. So we started our Healthy Meals Plan today, and I thought we had, I thought we had a very good first day. We had, basically, the plan, our original plan, is to have one site on campus, and it's at the junior high, and it's a drive-through. And they drive-through, and, and we give them a, a bag of, of milk cartons, and a bag of food for the week, for each student. We all, also are taking the food truck to five different locations, neighborhoods around the community. And so today, for the campus site, we had, we served 78 breakfasts, and 90 for lunch, and then for the food truck, we had 37 for breakfast and 43 for lunch. Now, the original plan for the food truck was to have it go out every day. The campus site was just going to be on Mondays for the week, and then we're going to take the food truck out every day. But with Governor Holcomb's announcement today that we are under a stay-at-home order beginning on Wednesday, we're going to change that plan. beginning on Wednesday, we're going to change that plan. The campus site will continue to be as it was, the same location, and it will be a week's worth of food that will be given out. The food truck, we're also going to be just using on Mondays. So it's going to be, going to those same five neighborhoods at the same schedule, but it's just going to go to those neighborhoods on Mondays, and the food truck will also give out a week's worth of food. And so a letter went out to parents this afternoon, sharing that information and those changes. I did an all-call tonight to make sure that the families who were going to the food truck know that tomorrow will be the last time this week the food truck will go out, but they'll get enough food for the rest of the week. And anything we send out, any of the communications we're sending out, we post on our website. E-Learning Days, that was another change. When Governor Holcomb announced that all schools would be closed until May 1, we revised our e-Learning Plan. We, the original plan was to go two weeks with, so we'd have 10 days of e-Learning, but with the governor extending that to May 1, we revised that plan. So first of all, we didn't start today, we decided to start on Wednesday to give everybody two more days to get ready. But from now on, we'll have e-Learning Days on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Thursdays, and then for Monday and Friday, we'll be using our waiver days. And so that enables the teachers to have a couple of days to prepare. It will also take a little bit, you know, parents, they've got so much on their shoulders right now, a lot of worries, a lot of extra stress, and so we thought this might be able to take a little bit off of their plates. So on Wednesday, we'll be starting that revised schedule. The other thing I just wanted to make note, make motion, make note of, I'm trying to say, is that our school's offices will be closed until May 1, and our Corporation Administration Office will be closed during the stay-at-home period, which is until April 7. So there, we will not, starting Wednesday, we will not have any secretaries or principals in the school offices. Starting on Wednesday, we'll just have Matt and I in our administration office. Now, these folks are working from home, our teachers are working from home, our treasurer, our person who's doing benefits is working from home, and as a need arises, we will make arrangements to try to take care of that particular business. Matt and I will be answering phones, we'll be trying to help parents get connected to their principal. The principals have done an excellent job of communicating with parents and answering their questions and getting medication and learning packets out. So it's just an ongoing, every day, it's just, it's our new norm for right now, and we're just going to be, we're being flexible, it's uncharted territory, so we're doing our best to meet the needs of our students and our parents. Parents are emailing me and the principals, and we're trying to respond as quickly as possible to be able to keep our partnership strong during this difficult time. So that's my report.
Thank you very much. Any questions?
Any questions for me?
Hearing none, we'll move on. RBB EA comments, Mr. Demoss, are you on?
I am, and just want to add my congratulations to Dr. Sanders and also my appreciation for how much work he has put in the last few weeks. Just an unfolding, unprecedented experience, and I've been doing this for a long time, and I kept telling my students, there's nothing like this, so. But I appreciate as well Rick's help with the technology. Five Star's been terrific, especially Megan Scott, she sat in on a meeting today, a little bit of the technical problems that we had with meeting here this evening, we had in a cabinet meeting at the high school, and I will encourage my students to recognize that there's going to be some of that when we start working on English, but we'll work through it, and so they can teach me something on technology. But again, we're all in this together, and I just hope everyone will stay safe and good luck.
Thank you, Mr. Demoss. Now for our board member comments, we'll start with Mr. Dernell.
Thank you. I want to read from Angie's, got cut off. Angie, are you back on yet? She wanted to comment and thank Kobe for speaking to the board and appreciate his dedication. She also want to thank Dr. Sanders and administrators, educators during this trying time. I feel very blessed to be a part of the corporation. Thank you for your, thank you to our donors who couldn't do it without you helping. So that's from Angie. I just wanted, again, to reiterate what Brad talked about and everybody's talked about, how wonderful Jerry has been through this crisis. I can't tell you, Jerry, how wonderful it's been for you, how you've updated us and kept us on the right path. I also want to congratulate Sam Jones, because I watched, kind of watched him grow up, and we've known Bob forever, and we're glad to have him back in the corporation, so that's welcome to him also. Thank you, thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mrs. Mary?
I won't say a whole lot, but I would like to thank the company that allowed us to use their service tonight. I think it was at no charge, so that's a good thing for us to be able to continue having our meetings. Mostly, most important is that the parents need to find things for their children to do, keep the children home, and encourage them with their education while they're off so they don't fall behind.
Thank you. Mr. Tucker?
I'm going to echo again what Jimmy said, thanks to the, Angela, thanks to the donors this evening for the nice times they donated to the school kids. Congrats to our new hires at RBB, we continue to hire talented young people, looking forward to working with them. And thanks again to Dr. Sanders for all his guidance along with Mr. Urban, as they continue to guide our corporation. One word I want to leave everybody with is resiliency. I want to thank all the teachers, administrators, students, parents, and support staff for their continued resiliency. We will get through this, and take the time to reach out to somebody that may be isolated in these tough times. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Tucker. Normally, at this point, I thank everybody for coming, and I do thank Mr. Wicker for coming and joining us, Kobe, but I also thank those who did not come to keep us at below 10 for our meeting tonight. Appreciate Mr. Routen in getting us set up for this conference call type of meeting. It was great, we had a lot of involvement. I was concerned how it'd work, we had one little glitch, but that was quickly remedied, and so we really appreciate the hard work. And again, for our next meeting, if it does have to be a remote meeting, we will have an opportunity, or try to make it an opportunity, for visitor comments as well as the public comments section of the 1028 and lease hearings. That's very important to the process, and so we're going to try to do that. I want to thank everyone tonight for being able to be adaptive, to be able to have this meeting in a remote fashion so that the work of the school corporation can continue, and I have all the confidence in Dr. Sanders to handle things with the resolution tonight. So with that, this meeting will adjourn, and have a wonderful evening, and bless you all.